An hour, and as you can see, it lasted much longer. So, I apologize for those of you that came, but I also hope that you got some information about what a Board of Adjustment has to do and what takes place during one of those special hearings. At this time, we have with us tonight Dr. Robert Kretsu from Hope Mills United Methodist Church to lead us in our invocation, followed by our Pledge of Allegiance. If you will, all please rise.
Today, when we hear "a house divided," we usually think about Carolina and Duke or something. But Jesus, 2,000 years ago, stated a truth that is vital for our community and for our nation, and that is, a house divided against itself can't stand. We've gotta be united. One of the first things our children understand is, if mama says no, who do you go to? Daddy. You gotta be together. Our national motto is "E Pluribus Unum," out of many, one. And so, tonight, I'd like to pray for unity in our community and our nation. Lord, we thank you for the privilege of living in this country and this community. We thank you for our freedoms. Lord, we thank you for our prosperity. We thank you for our mayor, for our commissioners, and all those who serve in this community. Lord, we pray that you would bring us together as a community and as a nation. Give us one mind and one purpose, and we will thank you for all that you do among us in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. At this time, do we have any additions or deletions to our agenda?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve the agenda. Do I have a second?
I have an addition to the agenda.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, I have an addition as well. A closed session for personnel and attorney-client privilege, please.
Okay, so a closed session for personnel. Do you want that at the end of the meeting?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so after, at the end of, after the manager's report, the very end?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, we'll do our closed session for attorney-client privilege and personnel. Okay? And did I hear another one?
Madam Mayor, under, I guess it would be new business?
Yes, sir.
Item F.
Yes, sir.
For discussion and consideration for approval of Resolution 2018-12 regarding the censure of Mayor Pro Tem Mitchell for conduct.
Has there any other additions or deletions to our agenda?
Modify my motion and include those additions.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second? Second? Have a motion and a second to approve our agenda. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. First thing on our agenda tonight is recognition of a great staff that we have, and I'm gonna ask if our mayor, Pro Tem, will assist me, and I will, we have some special certificates, and these are for National Public Works Week, and these are certificates of appreciation to our public works employees. So, if you will, if you'll go down front, then I'll hand them over to you as I read them. And as I call your name, and we know that some may not be here tonight, so what we're asking is, we'll make sure that these are taken to those employees. First, we have Dwight Shepherd. I asked Mr. Cisco, could you come up and receive these from Mayor Pro Tem? Calvin Purcell? James Hopkins? And if you'll remain up here, those that are, that are here, so we can get a picture. David Hiddle? Derek Douglas? Thomas Shara? Eric Lilly? William Monroe? Daryl Seifers? Virgil Snow? Jimmy Mabe? Harry Miller? Tony Pone? Gary Smith? Alexander Walker? We have a special certificate for our Public Works Director, Hector Cruz. Special one, and it reads, "In appreciation of your outstanding dedicated service and hard work for the town of Hope Mills, and in recognition of you during this National Public Works Week, May 20th, 2018 through May 26th, 2018, I, Mayor, join with the town commissioners in thanking you," and this goes to Deputy Public Works Director, Don And we have presented to Buildings and Ground Supervisor Lamar Marshall. And our Street Supervisor, Ira Peterson. If we will, let's give Ira and Hoppy and Don a round of applause. And again, we apologize that we were, this intent was probably, some of them would've been here if we hadn't waited so long, but we appreciate everything you do, and appreciate Ira and Hoppy for, and Don for being here with us this evening. And again, this is the week to make sure you thank these special people, because they do so much to keep our town beautiful, but also to keep it in working order. So, again, thank you very much. And I have Administrative Assistant Carolyn Nawachuku. Nawachuku? Nawachuku. Is she here? No? Okay, thank you. And thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, for assisting.
Thank you.
And again, we've got another group of young people that I'm sure feel like they've had a long wait, too, because we had our meeting at 6:30. Very fortunate in that we have youth from Southview High School, Grace Creek High School, and Jack Britt High School that have taken their time to help us as part of our youth leadership group. We asked them for the most recent task was to take a look at and participate in our multimodal congestion plan, and the reason for this was to give us another set of eyes, another set of ears, and someone to look at it, really, at a different age than most of us are. So, at this time, I'd like to recognize Henry Swartout and the young ladies that are here with him, if they want to share, or if they've got more information. The idea is, we, this committee is to provide us with insight as to what our leaders of tomorrow would like to see in Hope Mills. So, I'll turn it over to you two.
Hello, everybody. I'm Henry Swartout from Southview High School. Again, current senior class president, currently serving as the Chair of the Mayor's Youth Leadership Committee, and I'm here to talk about the multimodal congestion plan and our perspective, not only for us, but more so for the youth and for the future. We're trying to look forward, because that's the goal of our committee, because we have people on our committee who are gonna be here. We have freshmen, sophomores, juniors, so it's not just the seniors who are gonna be gone. So, what we try to do is, we try to look forward, and that's what we did whenever we were analyzing this plan and the causes, you know, different things to do with the plan. So, first off, just to keep this, you know, as short and simple as possible, we're gonna start off with the Main Street in Camden. I don't know, I don't have the exact plan for it, but the lights that'll be created for the U-turn pikes were absolutely a great idea, more so because of what's been seen towards the Wendy's, towards the Smithfield. I know everybody in Hope Mills loves Smithfield, so I imagine that they get stuck at that area where you're forced to make a left turn, or you have to gun it and go as fast as possible without Hope Mills PD pulling you over. So, I think with, with the light there and the more so protected turns and the shielded left turn to get into that area would definitely help out, not only for people who are driving, whether it's older people, middle-aged people, or our youth, it's gonna help protect them from getting in car accidents. That's one of the worst possible things that we can put towards our youth is car accidents, because they wanna go get some food, because they can sit at a stoplight for 20 minutes, or they can try to attempt to turn left for 20 minutes, and either way, it's a lose-lose situation for them. So, continuing on with that specific area, the other stoplight, more towards the right side down Camden, a great area for U-turns, so that people can get into that shopping center, so that they don't have to go across traffic at that, at the current light that's there, and slowing down traffic, because a lot of times what happens is that people will be going down Main Street, and they wanna turn into that area, and they have to end up slamming on brakes, which causes congestion problems and crowds up traffic. So, I'm gonna turn it over to Katie, who's gonna kind of provide statistical information and more factual information about this area.
Okay. Despite introducing new signals, the increased traffic flow efficiency of this configuration would improve signal progression along NC-59 and reduce traffic backups on both roadways, and also, the increased median space would provide a refugee for pedestrians crossing the intersection.
So, just to add more on to, more specifically, what she was saying, is that it helps protect people who are pedestrians, because a lot of kids wanna walk in that area, they wanna go get something to eat, they live towards Millstone, other areas down Camden Road, and so with these stoplights, with the shielded turns for pedestrians and stoplights and stuff like that, it'll definitely help protect our pedestrians, oftentimes, which do turn out to be children. So, I'm gonna move and talk about the Rockfish and Gulfview turn, or I don't know, traffic circle. So, traffic circles more specifically keep the flow of traffic going. So, whether it's 10 o'clock at night and everybody's off the road, and you're headed home from Jack Britt to your home in Hope Mills, you'll be stuck at a red light for almost five minutes. It's happening multiple times. I volunteered at the Stony Point Trail of Terror, scaring people in our town, and so every time, every night, I would go towards my house, which is located by Hope Mills Middle School, and I'd have to sit at that traffic light for five minutes. It was ridiculous. That's honestly, all I can say is that it's ridiculous. There's nobody out there except the Hope Mills Police Department. So, I, I think more genuinely for them, it'd be easier if they wanna go. Say, they wanna go out at 10 o'clock at night, they're running arounds around the city, trying to protect us, and they're stuck at a red light, and they can't see down the road, and they have somebody who's going 35, 40 down the road, and they end up going into the intersection and getting hit. That causes more problems, and I think a traffic circle would definitely help out with that, because they're not gonna be stuck at the red lights. Say, we have to have a fire truck. The fire trucks will be able to bend around the traffic circles more easy than having to blare their sirens in the neighborhood at 2:00 in the morning. Not necessarily saying that your sleep is more important than somebody's life, but it just causes a lot more problems when they have to sit through a red traffic light. So, we definitely have reached a conclusion on that basis, more so the red lights, the green lights, the yellow lights, but also on the fact that this provides a walking path for pedestrians, with two major things in mind. So, first of all, is that there's neighborhoods where Rockfish is. So, not all people live towards Rockfish or towards Brower Park, they live more towards the other areas, like the neighborhoods on Gulfview themselves. So, if they want to go to the Hope Mills Park, they either have to do one of two things, which is, one, jaywalk, obviously illegal, or walk a little bit further down towards Brower Park, and sometimes, I mean, everybody knows children, and oftentimes, they don't wanna do that. So, they end up jaywalking, and that can lead to people being hit, people being murdered, virtually. So, with this plan, what it does is, it provides walking paths. So, these walking paths will allow kids and children to not only legally cross the road, but also safely cross the road, and that's one thing that we're looking out for. And then, on a second basis is, more so with the park and the future of the golf course in mind, is that, say, somebody wants to walk towards the park, and eventually walk up towards the, what is gonna be, whatever it may be at the golf course. So, they wanna walk in that direction, they have to either a jaywalk or go towards Brower Park. So, there's two possible considerations, not only from us, for the kids, but from us for the future. So, and Katie's gonna provide a little bit more factual information about the traffic circles.
This intersection has one of the highest crash rates of any intersection in Hope Mills, and it is also one of the most congested, and roundabouts typically reduce crashes by up to 67% over signalized intersections, because they slow vehicle speeds to 25 miles per hour or less. This would also reduce traffic delays, and it would be safer and more comfortable for pedestrians. Thank you.
And that's Katie Hawkes. She goes to, she's a senior at Grace Creek High School. She'll be going to Chapel Hill, and Henry, you're going to?
NC State.
NC State. So, I couldn't get both of them, but State. But, but as you can see, ladies and gentlemen, our young men and women very much have insight into what we're trying to do, and we appreciate everything they've done, and we also appreciate how thoughtful they are in their answers. So, thank you for your presentation, Henry, and thank you for the whole group for working so closely together. Next, we have Denise Bruce from Sustainable Sand Hills.
Good evening. I'm Denise Bruce, and I am here with the Fayetteville area Metropolitan Planning Air Quality Stakeholders, formerly known as the Cumberland County Air Quality Stakeholders. We wanted to complicate things. So, I'm here tonight just to talk a little bit about air quality and the state of air quality here in our community. Just a general overview, air quality in Shore is the condition of the air around us, right here, both inside and outside. In our community, our biggest contributors to air quality, to poor air quality are vehicle and industrial commission, emissions, climate, the built environment, and available vegetation. I'll hit on each one of those points a little later. Poor air quality in general is associated with poor health, your cardiovascular diseases, stroke, heart attack, asthma, COPD. All of these are chronic conditions that develop over time, just to point that out. Also, air quality has economic and regulatory issues. Whenever your, when our communities are faced with poor air quality, it costs more for industry to be here. We don't want that. We wanna make it easy and cheap for them. In addition to that, highway funding is also decreased, along with required emissions reduction planning, which is costly, and finally, increased public healthcare cost. Here in our community, our biggest concern is ozone, and that is ground-level ozone, that is ozone, that is exist anywhere from ground level to five miles above our head, not to be confused with the ozone layer. And it is a combination of nitrous oxide and VOCs. I love this graphic, because it shows the number-one problem in our community, which are vehicle emissions, as far as, I don't wanna say problem, as far as contributor to poor air quality. We have solutions to that. We can all drive. What I do wanna talk about in a little more detail is this concept of exceed and stays. Now, according to EPA and the National Ambient Air Quality Standards, we have to be at, I'm sorry, yeah, we cannot be above 70 parts per million. This is in, as far as ozone concentration. However, this right here is based on the previous air quality standard of 75 parts per million. I do want to highlight the early years of the 2000s. If you lived here in our community during that time, you probably noticed that Fayetteville and Cumberland County in general had smog, which is kind of hard to believe that that was the case. But, in addition to that, especially the year 2002, we were dealing with high temperatures and drought. I'm gonna talk about why that's important here in a little bit later, because that trend is going to continue. But we've been doing a lot of work to bring those numbers down, and we're gonna talk about that. This is my hopeful picture of Cumberland County. It is showing that, if you'll see the slide over there that says "population growth," that there is showing, we've been growing in population, we're gonna continue to grow in population. We're looking at about 20,000 people every 10 years that are actually gonna stay in our community. They're not gonna pack up bags and go somewhere else, they're gonna stay permanently and continue to add. However, during that same amount of time, our ozone levels have been going down consistently in our community, so much so that EPA has given us recognition, and NCDQ has also recognized Cumberland County and its municipalities for its work. However, this right here is from the 2014 National Emissions Inventory, sent to me by my friends at EPA. Nitrous oxide is what is our largest contributor to ozone in our community, and that comes from our mobile sources, our cars. So, imagine my excitement when I heard the young people behind me talk about congestion plan, or congestion plan, because anywhere that we can keep traffic moving, but also provide opportunities for people not to drive, we can bring that number down. The second one I do wanna show is volatile, volatile organic compounds. The mobile sources are 37% of that, with a lot of smaller ones. So, it would, it would make people think that whenever we're dealing with air quality, the first thing that we would want to attack is our vehicle emissions in our community, and we all know how unrealistic that is, given that we are primarily a rural community dependent on personal transportation. So, what have we been doing to bring these numbers down? It's not because we woke up one day and suddenly had great air quality, I can tell you that. So, I do wanna take a little detour here and talk about climate impacts, and this right here is for the folks back here in the future, but while we are doing wonderfully on our ozone plan, we have some things to look forward to that are not so rosy. According to some climate scientists at Stanford, we are looking at having 60 days a year above 95 degrees in our community. 60 days. And we're looking at a drought severity that's 50% worse than we have it now by 2050. Now, I don't know about you guys, but 2050's not that far off, and so we're looking at perfect conditions for poor air quality over the long term. And it's very important that our community not only continue to plan, because we are in a good place, but we've got to plan for hotter, drier, wet climates in our community. So, what is the solution? We have been, and you guys did pass a resolution, supporting our work with Ozone Advance. It is a voluntary program, the best kind of regulatory program, I guess, because it's voluntary. It requires stakeholder involvement, both here at the local level with DEQ, at the Division of Air Quality, and EPA, and it does not work without local stakeholders, and I am very grateful to have Commissioner Meg Larson as part of my air quality stakeholders now. We have air quality stakeholders from all of the municipalities and some divisions of other public works divisions at City of Fayetteville. These stakeholders come back to you guys and tell you what we're working on, or what communities can be doing. Every year, we put out a four-part plan. It is both published publicly on the FAMPO website, and it is sent to EPA. EPA sends us back a bunch of comments. I do wanna point out to you the four areas, and the reason this is important for everyone today is because we are putting this plan together now, and we are looking for innovative air quality improvement ideas to put forth in this, in this plan. There are four areas that we focus on. That's creating awareness about air quality, that is, our land use planning, energy conservation, and transportation. I'm always excited to see what our municipalities put forth, and some of them kinda need a little bit of a nudge, so for you guys tonight, if you have any questions for me about what the town of Hope Mills could be doing to improve air quality, or build awareness, or to fit in any of the other two, I, I, there are reams and reams of information on what communities can do to improve their local air quality. Doesn't matter the size of the community, doesn't matter if you're Los Angeles, or you are Hope Mills, North Carolina, there are things that we could all be doing to improve our local air quality that fit into the needs of the community. That is one of the beauties of Ozone Action Plan. Instead of having federal rules passed down to us that tell us exactly what to do, we're kinda left to our own devices. So, I would like to see, I would like to see us really, really get innovative with this, because we are at a good point to do a little bit of experimentation, and, okay, from a science background, that's kinda like what I wanna do. I am appreciative that you guys have already passed the resolution. We put forth an updated resolution to all of our municipalities, making sure that we were in line with the new National Ambient Air Quality Standards, and we are. And just an FYI to commissioners and to the community, we do have air quality stakeholders meeting every quarter. That's the second Thursday of the first month of each quarter at 4:30 PM in the Cumberland County Historic Courthouse. If you all have any questions for me, that's all.
Okay, thank you so much. Any questions?
Sorry, I talk fast. It's, you know. Thank you. Thank you so much.
I am going to get with Denise for some ideas with us, because I had told her, I basically, when we came, the first meeting, I had no idea what they were talking about. I mean, so she's, she's kinda giving me the fast schooling on, on it, so she's gonna help come up with some ideas for the town of Hope Mills to participate in.
Good. Thank you. Thank you all. Okay, next, we don't have any public hearings. We have public comments, and our public comment tonight is from Mr. Rod McLean.
Madam Mayor, members of the Board of Commissioners, staff, and public, I haven't spoken for quite a few days, or quite a few meetings, and I'll try to get it all in in my three minutes. The Youth Leadership Committee just came up with something, and just as an offside of it, red lights in Hope Mills. Guess who controls your red lights? It's Fayetteville, not Cumberland County, Fayetteville. So, there's one of our problems. Roundabouts. Roundabouts are excellent. I was born in the land of roundabouts. I have lived in Europe, which is a land of roundabouts. They've got roundabouts in the United States. The first thing we need to do is send everybody back to school. They do not know how to handle a roundabout. But good luck to the Youth Leadership Committee. I'm glad to see they're looking at it. What I would like to talk about is the Constitution and the amendments there, too. Our favorite person for the Constitution, Mr. Al Ferry, is not here to represent himself, so I will represent for him. We do not need to lose any more of our rights, and I am glad to see that it is going to be discussed at length tonight on the agenda, but the right of free speech shall not, or should not, ever be held up by any Board of Commissioners, any Senate, any Congress, or anybody else with feelings of strength. Subject number three, the Board of Adjustment that we just went through. I think it was excellent that the Board of Adjustment did not figure out how long it was gonna take, and the amount of citizens who happened to be coming for this meeting tonight, I think mostly for the, for said Constitution stuff, were here to listen to part of it. It's about time we got some more citizens involved in what's going on in the town, and for them to listen to the Board of Adjustments, I think, is a very good item and a way of doing it. However, I would suggest that the Board of Adjustment maybe look at another day for putting on their meetings, rather than the one right before the town meeting. And I've got 34 seconds left. Artwork. A lot has been said about the artwork. A lot has been said about the artwork. I'm not an artist, I never claimed to be an artist, I do not even claim to like art. But I do wish that somehow people had had an opportunity to decide where some of these pieces go. I'm biased, maybe, but I think that the town has got the best-looking pieces up here, and the pieces they didn't like, they shoved down on the lake. Just a personal opinion, as I said, I'm not an artist. But I do notice that one of ours doesn't even have any paint on it. Thank you very much indeed, I don't have any more time left.
Next, our consent agenda. And if there's anything you'd like moved from the consent agenda after I've read it, we can do so. Consideration of minutes from May 7, 2018, regular board meeting. Consideration to accept the April 2018 financial statements. Consideration of transfer firearms to Craig's Firearms Supply in exchange for a $4,050 credit toward future purchases. And consideration of approval of Historic Preservation Commission Amendment, changing the members from five to seven. Is there anything that you would like moved? If not, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as read?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed. Next on our agenda is old business. And this would be consideration of approval of Odyssey Court Stormwater Project bid from Marlin Construction, currently budgeted in the amount of $177,650. And it would be approving Budget Amendment Number 33 and Number 34. And I'll turn it over to Ms. Adams, or Ms. Brown.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Ms. Brown is going to come up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Board. So you'll notice on the slide, this is the same presentation that we gave to the previous board. I'm just bringing it back up so that you guys can see what the previous board approved. The homeowner is here today, her husband could not make it, he is deployed. But I believe he's willing to FaceTime if needed. I do have some videos, this presentation is only two slides, so it won't take me long, but I do want to show you the two clips that she's provided us. So if you'll look, there's a seven-acre section up at the very top. There's sixteen acres, twelve acres, 5.8, 7.1, and then a thirteen-acre section that all drains onto her front lawn. When these subdivisions were, I guess, approved back, it was before stormwater regulations. So they were not required to do anything but give it a place to go, and that place is Ms. Connell's front yard. It has completely torn up the driveway, the pipe is undersized for the amount of water that it's receiving. This is a project that was on our CIP list. It wasn't one that has come up yet, but because we didn't have funding for one of the larger projects, we brought this before, not this previous time, but the board before, when they did their board retreat and requested them to look at it and possibly approve it for the next one, since we would have funding for it, to be able to do it in full. The next slide, as you can see, it's the same green outlined areas, but what you see, the yellow are drainage pipes, and the blue are actually the inlet. So if you look, everything drains down to where that white thing is that says "overtopping driveway." So if you'll bear with me for two seconds, I'm going to pull up... Okay, if you will look, this is the video from the beginning of Matthew. There is a drainage ditch over to the right-hand side, and that is her driveway that is underwater. She's in the cul-de-sac, the house is behind you, and all of that is going over. There's a pipe on this side of the driveway, but it's completely, the pipe can't handle it, it's old, it's degrading. You'll see a cone that's been in her yard for about four years. I promised her that we're taking that cone back when we do this project, that it's not her cone to keep. Although she feels like she has some ownership over the cone. Let's see if we can get the other one. I'll show you, so obviously Matthew is more of a flooding event. But this is in a normal rain event. So in the video, she's been recording for about fifteen minutes of a rain event. And this is what the front lawn looks like. Real quick, so we bid this project out once, and we received no bids. We had four people show up for the, we actually had them, we required them to come to the meeting. So we had four contractors show up and nobody bid. We gave it a couple weeks, we called around, asked what the problem was. Most people were just too busy, gave it another couple weeks, bid it out, and we got one bid. The bidder has been vetted by the engineer, everything checks out, and that is the bid that you have before you tonight.
Madam Mayor, have you got everything covered in this bid?
We have everything covered in this bid that was foreseen on the front end. So I can't tell you that we might not find something when we start digging, but we do have contingency in any of these contracts that we bring before you, for just in case. Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Well presented, Beth.
Thank you.
Well presented.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
May I make a motion?
Yes, ma'am.
I make a motion to approve that Martin Construction bid for $177,650, authorized by and authorized by Town Manager to execute contracts for approval of the Budget Amendment Number 33 and 34.
Have a motion and a second, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed.
Thank you so much.
Next, we have discussion of food trucks. This was requested by Commissioner Larson, and we have a presentation by Chancellor McLaughlin, our Planning Administrator.
Madam Mayor, I think we missed the Flood Plane Ordinance Amendment.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm trying to move us, I'm sorry, Mr. McLaughlin. I'm just moving you right on through. We don't want to miss the flood plane. All right, we have consideration of amendment to the Flood Plane Ordinance. Now who gets that? All righty.
So as you may recall, we were looking at the Section 42107 Subsection C, which is the elevation certification requirements. And that, I believe, is the section that's being revised. All we're doing is adding the requirement that you need to get an elevation certificate prior to any construction. Where it was discretionary that we asked for it, now it's mandatory that they provide it. Essentially, we were mirroring language that are found in other municipal ordinances on this one.
Okay, are there any questions in reference to this?
They won't have to pay all that money upfront, will they? Because the old one had something to the effect of, they got the permit, then they revised that they had to get the drawings.
I don't think there's any fee associated, Beth, you may be able to weigh in on that. Oh, she's walked out. I don't believe there's a fee associated with that, but I'm not entirely sure.
Thank you.
But essentially, what we're doing is making something that was, you know, we can require it, now we do require it. That's all there is.
Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion?
I just want to thank Mr. Hartzog and Ms. Brown for going through that and coming to terms and agreeing on the language.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve the amendment.
Second.
Have a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed. Now, Mr. McLaughlin, we have a discussion of the food trucks.
I'm about ready to try one of them before we get out of here.
I'll try to make this brief, I know everybody's kind of tired. But as the Board is aware, about a year ago, we started having food truck rodeos here in Hope Mills. The main goal was to make Hope Mills an attractive destination for food trucks, knowing that when things started to develop, we would start to get calls for permanent food trucks to come here. And at that point, I needed to be prepared to draft an ordinance. So the Board asked us to put this on the agenda for this evening. And I wanted to kind of go over some brief proposed regulations that I think would possibly help to regulate food trucks in a way that protected businesses and residents of Hope Mills, but also supported them as viable businesses as well. First thing first, what is a food truck? I'm defining it as a licensed mobile and motorized vehicle food unit that is temporarily utilized on a privately-owned piece of property where food items are being sold to the general public. In terms of typical proposed zoning districts, we would more than likely approve them in commercial, light industrial, industrial, and mixed-use developments. Some of the regulations would be that the subject property would have a, must have a primary use. No sales on public streets unless it's affiliated with a town event. In terms of capacity, two food trucks allowed on parcels less than an acre, three on parcels between half acre and one acre, four food trucks on parcels over an acre, except for special events. Temporary outdoor seating will be allowed only on lots of one acre or more. In terms of distance requirements, we would impose a hundred and fifty-foot distance requirement from an existing restaurant, fifty feet from another food truck, twenty feet from any fire hydrant, twenty feet from any sidewalk or driveway, a hundred and fifty feet from a residentially-zoned district. More regulations would require that they have authorization of property ownership, and that cannot be used to circumvent distance regulations. I've studied Greensboro, Fayetteville, and other ordinances. Some of the holes I've found is that if you have authorization of property ownership, some ordinances allow you to circumvent the distance requirements, and you can park a food truck right beside a restaurant. So I would not move to put that, allow that in the ordinance, proposed regulations that I'm drafting. In terms of parking, the approved location must be physically marked, cannot impede or block other additional parking areas. Here's another piece, hours of operation would be 7:00 AM to 4:00 AM. But for any truck located within two hundred feet of residential dwelling, the business hours would stop from eight to ten. Now, again, you're allowed to go as close as a hundred and fifty feet to residence, but there's another distance of fifty feet added. So if you're on a commercial establishment, or commercially-zoned property, but you're still two hundred feet away from a residential dwelling, then your business hours would have to stop by ten. Free-standing sandwich boy signs are permitted only within the permitted area, not to exceed twenty square feet in size. If you recall, a lot of the food trucks have those little sandwich boy signs as their menus and things of that nature. In terms of the approval process, a sketch plan must be approved by the Town of Hope Mills, staff indicating the location and compliance with regulations for all sites that the proposed truck has received authorization from. It must be kept on the truck at all times, but if you recall, most food trucks want to use multiple locations. So those multiple locations would have to be approved as well.
One question on the previous slide, 7:00 AM to 4:00 AM?
This is just typically, I'm not looking at that on a piece of property that would be anywhere near residential, but that is the typical timeframe that I've seen. Again, these are all proposed, you can pretty much slice them up as much as you want. I've actually seen some that said 5:00 AM, so I don't know who was out at 4:00 AM at Hope Mills, it's not me. But like I said, I did mirror a lot of other ordinance regulations.
That was just, I was hoping it was supposed to be 4:00 PM.
No, it's 4:00 AM. It's meant to allow for you to operate a lot longer in an area that is primarily commercial, but not anywhere close to residential. And that the other timeframe at ten is meant to require a food truck to shut down if you are in close proximity to residential. The timeframes, we can change, these are all proposed.
Breakfast truck.
Again, in terms of proposals, we have talked extensively with the county. This ordinance change would be put in the Town of Hope Mills ordinance, which pulls the approval process to us. It wouldn't require board approval, but it would require submission of a zoning permit, which is a sketch plan that we would actually make sure that adhered to all these regulations. In terms of permits, again, the zoning permit or sketch plan will be required. We've spoken extensively with Cumberland County Health Department, they would still continue to regulate them the way they normally do, but you will be required, they will be required to submit that approval from the county at the time that they apply for the zoning permit. Permit fee will be fifty dollars, and we're still requiring them to submit for the business licenses. You are where we don't charge for those, but it allows us to track and things of that nature. And what I wanted to do here is provide a little sketch to kind of see how this applies in real life. If you look on the left side of the screen, you see two residents, and you see a street that they're located in front of, across from that street is a parking lot. So if you see in this area outlined in white, you see a food truck here. That's the marked-off location, but as you can see on A, that food truck is a hundred and fifty feet from a residential property. Hours will be 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM. B, you see that that food truck is twenty feet away from a fire hydrant. C, it's twenty feet from any sidewalk or building entrance. But D is that it is located a hundred and fifty feet from an existing restaurant. So this is just an idea of how you would apply these regulations. But this will be typical type of sketch plan that will be submitted. Again, these are all proposed regulations, but I'm asking for guidance on any changes to these regulations, or any additional regulations that we can draft to send forward to the county ordinance.
Yes. So do you address how many permits daily are going to be issued? I mean, are we going to, as many as we want, or five a day?
The way that they're regulated, they don't regulate a certain amount of food trucks per day. I will say that since all this started, I've gotten about maybe three total food trucks that were trying to come here on a pretty permanent basis. The rest of them were just coming for our events. But I did tell myself, when I got the first couple phone calls, I wanted to at least have some type of regulations in place. But in my study, and I haven't seen anything that regulates a certain number in the town per day, but I did regulate a certain number per lot based on the size.
And another one, when I was looking through some of the other municipalities, music. Does that address some of them allowing, they don't, most of them don't allow for them to have any type of...
I didn't put that in mind, but I wouldn't be opposed to adding that in there, because I think one that we use, his music competes with our music. But I wouldn't have any problem, especially where I'm trying to, like I'm saying, I'm putting regulations in there to kind of soften the blow for residences and things of that nature. But just because you're in a commercial area doesn't mean that people want to hear blasted music. So I wouldn't be opposed to adding that in there as well.
Madam Mayor? Chancellor, could you back up a slide? The permit fee is fifty dollars, where did you get that?
That's the typical average permit fee in most municipalities.
Is that daily, or?
No, that's just when you come to get the permit. So let's say you had a food truck and you want to operate in four locations.
Right.
You have to submit a sketch plan, and I would vet those particular four site plans. The actual permit that you're submitting to get the approval is fifty dollars. So that wouldn't be any different than a fifty-dollar signed permit fee, any other permit fee.
How long does it last?
It would last as long as they want to operate. Like I said, I'm looking at other ordinances, I haven't seen anything that governs a duration of time. It basically says that as long as they have the property ownership, the owner of the property's authorization, and as long as they actually met the requirements that were put forth in terms of the distance and the regulations, it will basically, they would be basically allowed to operate whenever they would want to. it will basically, they would be basically allowed to operate whenever they would want to, but only on those locations.
And Chancellor, and that's for one or as many trucks as they want, and as many locations as they wanna set them up?
Each truck could come and set up at any location that they would wanna set up. Again, we haven't seen anything that actually dictates a certain number of trucks over a certain amount of time within a certain area, so it's not like City of Fayetteville says that you can't do any more than ten food trucks in Fayetteville or anything like that. Again, I'm wanting to put regulations in place, but I'm very cognizant of putting regulations in place that may be adverse, but I, I do agree with the fact that they do need to be regulated.
I think he's being fair.
That, it, I'm, uh, that's up to the board, uh, whatever.
To the brick and mortar, uh, restaurant businesses that we have in our town. I think it's being, it's, I think it's an issue of fairness.
I agree. Um, I think this actually happens any, in any town or municipality that you're introducing a food truck ordinance. You're gonna have some questions, a- and I think the main questions that you're gonna have is directly with, uh, how it affects the brick and mortars, which is why we put those distance requirements. And I think Fayetteville was only a hundred, I made hours a hundred and fifty. Um, but, but I do agree that the brick and mortar, um, establishments do kinda have a very touchy relationship with food trucks.
Well, it's that, and it's, what about an entrepreneur who's just starting a food truck and only has one food truck? And then there's someone that comes in with six food trucks and just takes up the entire section. They only pay fifty dollars, but you've got a struggling entrepreneur who's really trying to make one food truck work. You think, is that fair?
I would say to address that, maybe, uh, direct me to add, uh, a permit fee per location.
Per truck.
Per truck, meaning that if you're coming in to actually locate on four different, uh, sites, then maybe the permit, uh, fee applies to each site that you're trying to, uh, it, trying to actually operate on. It really, um, doesn't matter to me, but whatever pleases the board in terms of, uh, regulations that allow for.
Chancellor, I'd like to direct you to do more research on this and bring back some recommendations for the board. That's, I mean, I'm not saying you're wrong or right, I'm just saying some additional research and some, some recommendations.
Madam Mayor, if I might, if I might, um, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
I mean, I'm, I live in the world of America where it's free enterprise, and if the food truck's outselling your restaurant, you're not doing something right, you need to raise your game. And, um, as all's fair, as far as I know, you know, I want us to follow the best practices, but I n- I don't want us to get, we're a big brother either, and, uh, super micromanaging entrepreneurs that wanna come to our town. Just my opinion.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, Chancellor, I've been told that every food truck has to have a commissary backing it, is that true?
Yes, that is actually how it's regulated from the county. So, if you have an approved food truck, you have to have a brick and mortar restaurant that you're affiliated with, and that's called a commissary. So, what the food, uh, that the Commonwealth Health Department does is you're required to prepare your food in that actual, uh, commissary, so, the, even though there is sometimes a touchy relationship, there's also a very harmonious one where every food truck, I think one of the local, uh, establishments off Trade Street is a commissary to about ten food trucks in Cumberland County. So, there are relationships between brick and mortars and every food truck, 'cause it's required by Cumberland County. We don't regulate that, we're just saying in our ordinance that, uh, we would mirror or require that that they comply with the Health Department regulations.
Okay, any other questions? So, you want Chan- the, the goal here is for Mr. McLaughlin to bring us back another document or document with some other information, is that what I'm hearing?
I'd like to get this information in the hand, uh, instead of presenting on the spot, so I can study on it, instead of being presented on the spot, so, uh,
Okay.
if you can get that, the slides to us, at your convenience, so we can have two weeks to study on it.
Yeah, the slides in advance would be great. Nice slides, Chancellor.
Thanks.
Really.
Okay, any other questions? Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Okay, next we have a discussion of the Hope Mills sign ordinance, and this was requested by Commissioner Larson. And do we have any presentation on that, or?
No presentation, I just wanted to pretty much, uh, open the floor to any, 'cause I'm, from my understanding, I think the main issue is to see if there are ways that we can kinda strengthen the ordinance, and I'm, I'm open to any, uh, suggestions that the board may have.
Um, I just, I went through it, and I just kind of made a little list of things, um. One of the, one of them is pay, on, starting on page six, is it the building inspectors? Or is that who is the person that's responsible for the checking of the signs, because we have a list of it.
You mean like enforcement and stuff like that?
Yeah, we have it as the building inspector.
We ta- kinda do it by committee. Um, the code enforcement, um, officer here typically does sign sweeps. I actually go out with her to do sign sweeps, we've actually pulled our stormwater department in, um, because, uh, with only one or two people, the sheer number, um, is massive. Um, I think on one Friday, we may pull up about sixty signs. Um, so, it's not ju- even though the ordinance may list inspector, it's really by committee. It's about four of us to actually kinda tag team.
What about the signs that are permanent signs? That you have to get a permit in order to put the sign up? I know at one time, we were, we were very strict on, when you came in to get your permit for your sign, then you had to have somebody come out and measure to make sure it was in the right spot, that it was in the right depth, that it was the right size. Have we gotten away from that?
No, no, we haven't, not, so, there are some peculiar instances. Um, but, uh, for the most part, um, when a sign permit, um, is submitted, they have to get zoning approval first. That's where the square footage of the sign, um, and the height and things of that nature are, are checked, and then it goes to the building permit, and then at some point, um, I'll go back and do a follow-up inspection to make sure it was put in compliance, but you have some instances, I, I have one now, um, that I won't mention, but I'm working with him based on some very creative things that they did, that... That, but th- there is a give and take that we have, where we do police some of the newest. Now, there are some old, older ones that I don't know how they were approved. Um, and I know, I do know that there was an inventory that was talked about at some point way back when, I don't think we ever moved forward with it, but, um, to answer your question directly, we do still check, uh, location, height, sign, uh,
I know, I've seen one business in particular that I doubt that the original sign was permitted, and then they've since changed the t- nature of their business, and they've come up with a different sign. And I know in that particular case, it, it didn't appear that it matched the sign ordinance requirements. And if they in fact had gotten a permit, I can't imagine it being approved.
If it's the one I think you're talking about, we're talking about the same one. Um, well, I'm, I'm actually having an active conversation with them on how to bring that into compliance. But, from my understanding, the erecting of the sign back did not receive a permit. So, I'll, I'll, I won't go too much in the detail, but I'll tell you that much.
Other questions? Um, go ahead.
I thought from previous wards, was the discussion of going towards the low pri- profile monument sign, style sign, rather than having-
Round sign?
Yeah, mhm, more like what they've done at McDonald's.
I know we've had some discussions, when we did the, uh, initial overhaul, where we did a comparative analysis of, um, about four different municipalities, um, that just wasn't included in the official direction. I do know that I wouldn't, I was talking to, uh, the town manager, I wouldn't be opposed to that. Um, even if you guys wanted to do it maybe on a case study area in an overlay district first, um, or if you wanted to do it citywide, I wouldn't be opposed to that. Um, one, uh, and I will just mention this, one amendment that I was gearing up to ask you guys to consider would be, there are some shopping centers, like at Traymore Village, and at Rockfish Commons, right there at the corner of Waldo's Beach and, um, Rockfish Road, where the actual building faces a major thoroughfare like Rockfish, but their access to the building is not off of Rockfish, it's in the rear. And the rear access is in an existing shopping center, so if you can kinda picture the Food Line Shopping Center off of Waldo's Beach, and the BBNT, and the shopping center beside BBNT. Based on the true application of our sign ordinance, they are allowed one attached sign and one freestanding sign. If they put their attached sign on the building facing Rockfish Road, when I pull into the parking lot, especially if I'm coming from Camden, I can't see the name of the business. My ordinance does not allow me to actually allow them to put signs on both sides of the building, and it's the same thing with those buildings along Traymore, um, along Rockfish. If I'm turning in at McDonald's, and I'm coming in from the backside, I can't see the name of the business on some of the newer ones. Now, there are some out there that do have double-sided buildings, but since I've been here, the application of the sign ordinance won't allow me to do that. Um, it's one of the compromises that I had thought of is, there's a maximum square footage that's allowable for that sign of a hundred square feet typically, or a, a ratio of two to one based on the width of the building. I've seen it where some ordinances, so long as they don't go over the max square footage, then they will, can put two smaller signs, one on the front, one on the back, so long as they don't go over the maximum allowable square footage. I've had two different, um, groups of people ask for that leeway. To date, I haven't actually done it, but that's something that I wanted to, when this came back up, it was one of the ones that I was gonna possibly see if you guys would be interested in entertaining. But anything else you guys want, uh, lowered signs, excluding certain signs, uh,
Materials.
Double-fronted signs.
Materials that they're made of.
Um, if we go to the direction of materials, I do, uh, suggest that that's done through an overlay, um, because it's gonna be pretty daunting, um, to change, just like in terms of the letters, uh, it was five hundred of them. So, in terms of just right off the snap, off the, the top, if we're gonna move to make every sign in Hope Mills required to look something like that, then you're gonna have, immediately, you're gonna have a significant amount of grandfather signs. Um, if that's the pleasure of the board, that's perfectly fine. I've seen areas where we maybe establish an overlay district in a corridor, and then you apply as many things as possible and see how they actually work out. But whichever direction that the board would like to see, I'm open to that.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I would think that if the signs were made so the letters could individually be changed, it'd be more beneficial for the business owner, should a, a light go out in the sign that's fluorescent or, or however it has to be installed in there. It'd be a lot cheaper from to change one letter than it would the whole Hope Mills sign, you know?
Well, I think the balance you wanna have, and I've had several conversations with Commissioner Larson, the balance you wanna have is, you wanna make sure you have regulations that softly direct, or softly deal with the aesthetical value of the sign, what it looks like. We can't regulate content, but can we move a little bit further with kinda strengthening the code to make them look a little bit more uniform? Um, that's where you're starting to talk about materials. Um, I think the vehicle or the avenue we approach enforcing it or actually putting those regulations in place, I think, is the key. Um, but I would like to see, uh, if I could, was it, would be allowed to put together some packages, because when we looked at signs, we were talking about sandwich board signs and things of that nature in, in, um, historic district. I don't think I've ever explored materials and things of that nature, so I lo- I'd love to put some things together for you guys, but I wanted to get some direction on some specific areas that you wanted me to concentrate on.
Anyone have any further information for Mr. McLaughlin? That's it for me.
If we were to make changes, excuse me. We would need to allow enough grace time for businesses to make the changes several years, whatever.
Well, I will tell you, um, because of the heat I feel, I'm trying to get a little bit more aggressive. The letters I sent, I gave them thirty days, uh, with the flags, 'cause I'm about to have to flag sign it myself.
That's with the illegals, the signs that are illegal now, all of the others, the letters have gone out, so.
I think we, we spoke, um, and this was the previous board, when we discussed this, we spoke in terms of that when the business changed, then it would come under the requirements of the sign ordinance. In other words, uh, if, if my business right now, if something else goes in there, then that sign, if it didn't match or meets the sign ordinance requirements, the new business owner would have to make those changes, so that I'd be grandfathered in as long as that same business stayed there. If I changed the type of business I had, then I came under the, the new, uh, sign ordinance. And I think we did that so that the grandfatherings there, but it didn't grandfather it to the, it grandfathered to the type of business, rather than to the fact that there was a business there. In other words, once it changed.
Even if like what you're saying is, if the use is, uh, if it's still commercial, and a new commercial business came, that still should trigger it.
That's right.
As opposed to, and I think that'll, that'll be, uh, some language you can put in there to kinda, um, because again, just like with the food trucks, I wanna put language in there that actually regulates, not hinders. Same thing with the signs, um, if we get too aggressive, your small and mom and pop stores are gonna be very, uh,
Right.
uh, it'll be imposing some, some, some strict regulations, but what can you do to move in that direction with some, some healthy, uh, regulations that help to kinda, um, bring these things into compliance?
Okay. Do you wanna give a, a date that you would like to have something brought back, or do you want to, um?
Something you guys, quick and a bit.
How much time you need?
Two weeks, I mean, I mean, really, it's whatever you guys direct me, I mean, that's, that's where I'll move with it.
We can work on it, and, um, Mr. McLaughlin can research some other areas that perhaps some of the, have some of these items, the lower profile, the materials addressed, um, and...
Grace period.
When we're, when we feel, you know, that we've got everything the way we want it, then we'll bring it back to the board. How's that, within a reasonable amount of time, um, no more than, I would say, no more than a couple of months, maybe a, a month.
Well, and I think what happened previously was, when we said this, then no one enforced the sign ordinance that we had. So, we're not saying not enforce the sign ordinance we have, we're saying that we're gonna make, we're gonna tweak it.
Just tweak it.
Yeah.
Tweak it, because that's where we got into some-
Well, and I think when that sign ordinance was adopted, we knew that there was a possibility that we may have to come back and re- relook at it, retweak, you know, tweak it a little, so. Add a little, um, more stringent in a su- couple of areas, so, a little more.
Alrighty.
Madam Mayor, how about the, how about the second meeting in June?
Yeah, I think we, yeah.
We'll be past the, uh, public hearing for the budget, so.
I was gonna say, we'll, we'll get the budget behind it.
Yeah, let's go to the second meeting in June.
Alright.
Okay. Alrighty, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Alright, next we have discussion of elected officials' use of social media and email when a quorum is probable. This was requested by Mayor Pro Tim Mitchell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I have a prepared statement I'd like to read, it won't take long. Honorable Mayor, fellow commissioners, town staff, and citizens. Um, I have asked that this agenda item on social media be placed on the agenda tonight, along with all related emails, which I have copied all the time, my fellow elected, by the way. This past week, I forwarded some information to the up-and-coming weekly regarding my due diligence that began in February of this year concerning a quorum of our elected being members of a private closed group called Hope Mills Chatter. As always, my comments to them were professional, and I did not mention any names. As one of your commissioners, I do not condone personal attacks on any of the team Hope Mills members, including fellow elected town staff or town citizens. The issues are whether virtual meetings of elected officials behind closed doors constitute a violation of the North Carolina Public Meetings Law, whether public records are not being shared with all citizens, what does open and transparent government really mean, and impacts on our team building. There are three types of standards, in my opinion, legal, which is often the minimum requirements governing behavior. Then there is ethical, when something just doesn't feel right or creates public concerns. And then there are best practices, which we strive towards in achieving an optimal society. Social segregation of elected officials is not the answer towards achieving our optimal society here in Hope Mills. In this boardroom, we agree that nobody should ever be berated or have personal attacks made on them. However, we get in private groups whether or not- However, we get in private groups, whether on Facebook or otherwise, do we support and defend our team members and fellow citizens? We talk about team building and open government. But how can this be accomplished when certain elected officials and other town representatives meet behind closed doors, whether virtually or in reality? Some states have already passed laws preventing elected officials from being members of closed social media groups. I would cite Florida. If you do your research, you'll know this. Legally, a quorum doesn't necessarily constitute a public meeting in North Carolina. According to UNC School of Government Law Professor Frida Bluestein's interpretation of the North Carolina General Statutes. And her emails are included in the packet with the agenda, which I have forwarded. Possible quorums constituting a violation of the public meetings laws existed in the Hope Mills Chatter from December fifth, two thousand seventeen. Until May fourteenth, eighteen, and Commissioner Legg dropped out. And he cited, quote, "A possible conflict of interest," end quote. Even without a quorum, all records, including electronic, used by elected officials current and prior to make decisions. Regarding town business are public records and subject to the North Carolina Public Records Law. So this past Thursday, May seventeenth, eighteen, I requested all public records of town business discussed by my fellow elected. From within the Hope Mills Chatter Group as part of my due diligence in this matter. Our elected have all mutually agreed not to discuss the people's business in active conversation via email. Due to possible quorums, even though the laws in North Carolina doesn't currently prevent it. Shouldn't we take the s- it same high road and approve the same policy to social media with these closed groups? And it's ironic that the pastor said what he said tonight, because I also say in this. President Lincoln's speech about a house divided, uh, against itself cannot stand. And they are still words of wisdom today. This house has been divided long before I got here and it's been divided since about two thousand fourteen. Anybody that comes to these meetings should know. In the interest of team building and open government, isn't it time for our house to unite? I know where this will end up at, but I like to make a motion that the elective will not actively discuss our towns' business. In group emails or participate in closed private groups that actively discuss town business. And are not transparent as part of our rules of procedure. This will help prove to citizens of Hope Mills that we truly care about open and transparent government. As well as appreciating, appreciating our town staff and citizens by taking ti- team building seriously. And that concludes my statement.
Madam Mayor, I have a prepared statement to read as well. In response to Mayor Pro Tim Mitchell's concern.
First he did have a motion. Is there a second to his motion?
I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion on the floor?
I might, I might need to weigh in on that motion. I would probably have to do some research as to whether we could pass such a resolution. Because I, that does raise free speech concerns.
Yeah.
Um, I, I'm not sure that you can have a restriction. I mean, you, you certainly can have a restriction against, you know, a, a violation of the meetings law. But I don't know that you can have a restriction against town officials discussing public matters amongst themselves via email or on a social media site. I would have to do some research on that, but my inclination is that that, that, that would present first amendment issues.
Well, perhaps we also need to provide any, uh, communications that we use in making decisions in this boardroom. That we rely on as mandated by state statute.
Yes, certainly if, if there is documentation that is relied on, used by a board member and.
Exactly.
Um, that, that could potentially be a public record, but that doesn't mean that every communication about an issue is necessarily public record.
Correct.
So this time, do we want to?
We'll just allow, uh, attorney, here's, uh, the research and come back to us, if that's okay?
Okay. Is it okay with you, Commissioner Edwards, as a second on this?
I wouldn't like to make a statement, though.
Okay.
I mean, I'm not opposed to freedom of speech or anything like that, but, um. I know, and everybody has their own opinion about everything, but you can't be judgmental about people you don't even know. And I remember with the Walmart deal, two years of the chitter chatter. And I remember what they did with Commissioner Marley and, and Ed Dever. And I'll never forget that, so I have a sore spot when it comes to the chitter chatter. That's all.
Okay.
Apparently Florida didn't think it was a violation of freedom of speech.
Well, Mayor Pro Tim, I have a different research from Florida and I'll address that in my statement. Back in February, Mayor Pro Tim, you raised the question. If three town commissioners constitute a quorum, their participation in the Hope Mills Chatter may be a violation of the North Carolina Open Meeting Law. Therefore, the main concern is if the presence and participation of three Hope Mills Commissioners in this private chat group. The Hope Mills Chatter Facebook group constitutes a violation of the Open Meetings Law. You posed that question directly to Frida Bernstein at the David M. Lawrence Distinguished Professor. Of Public Law and Government School of Government at the University of North Carolina Chapel Hill. Who was clearly the authority and credentialed to render such an opinion. She sent you an opinion back by email. And it says, "I can understand the concern people might have about this, but I don't think it necessarily violates the Open Meeting Law." Now, this is in February now. The law required access, the law requires access to official meetings of public bodies, like the one we're in tonight. An official meeting occurs under the statute when a majority of the public body gathers together. Or simultaneously communicates by conference telephone or by any other electronic means. Key word there is simultaneously. She goes on to say, "So my viewpoint is that if they are separately posting comments on Facebook. And are not engaged in a simultaneous conversation. Or as close to simultaneous as you can get online, it is not an official meeting." If they want to provide their individual thoughts and positions only to their constituents. They have a First Amendment right to do so. As long as they're not communicating simultaneously. This was written and emailed to you back in February from Frida Bluestein. So my question tonight was if this was addressed and answered in February, why is it a concern now? I mean, no, let me finish, Mayor Pro Tim. The presence and participation of three Hope Mills Commissioners in the private chat room does not constitute a violation of the Open Meetings Law. Period. In fact, Florida dealt with this very issue. Whether or not a quorum is established, and I got this today, is clearly not the issue here. The real issue is ensuring that members of the town board must not engage in an exchange or discussion of matters. That foreseeably will come before the board for official action. Good judgment and candor seems all that is required. In Kansas, their courts support this statement by saying campaign and or personal social media accounts. You wanna hear this one? Are not subject to public records requests, as the one you sent us. Unless they are used to transact public business. Therefore, the final answer to this question of concern is that there is no issue. There is no violation of three Hope Mills Commissioners being on a closed Facebook group, the Hope Mills Chatter. Provided that they are not simultaneously discussing town business, and they are not. You also bring out, bring up some concerns about questionable social media practices. And, and you also said that starting to manifest and have a detrimental effect on the town. I really gave that some concern. I'm gonna pass down some articles, an overview of every motion that we have made from December the fourth. Every one of them. Lot of research here, and I'm gonna give you the numbers, so what they are. I deal in the facts, but I do my research. I look for the facts. Since no, since December the fourth, we have, we have had two hundred and fifty-nine motions come before this board. Two hundred and fifty-nine. Of all those motions, two hundred and forty-two of them have passed by this board unanimously. That's pretty doggone good. Two hundred and fifty-nine, two hundred and forty-two passed, that leaves seventeen. That means as a board, we agree ninety-three percent on the issues brought before us. I, I'm really proud of that, as a not divided board, but as a unified board. Now, there were seventeen motions that didn't pass. And of those, there was either three to two or three to one, and remember, Mayor Pro Tim, he wasn't here for one meeting. Only eleven of those didn't pass, and then there were four to one motions, six of them didn't pass. And if anybody wants to inspect the minutes, I have them all right here in this folder. So I bring up this concern that where is it having a detrimental effect on the business of this town? You, you gotta show me, because I don't. I'm speaking. Thank you. Yep.
We have to ask you not to, audience, to be quiet.
Also, Mayor Pro Tim, you launched some type of informal poll on your town. Mayor Pro Tim Facebook page to see how residents felt about it. And the number says seventy-six percent of the respondents said they had concerns about elected town officials participating in a private and restricted group. I'd like to ask you, how many respondents responded to your poll? I think thirty-two, maybe even forty at best. And I'm not sure why you launched such a poll when this question and this issue was clearly addressed in February. And if this issue had such a detrimental factor on this board's decision, why didn't you bring it up to us before tonight? Why did you make reference to it before tonight? In closing, I support that transparency is vital to free and open, open government. No one supports that more than I, cause it was one of my campaign platforms in my election. There are nu- numerous media groups in the Ho- Hope Mills Chatter right now, numerous. They read, they cover, and they report, and they write about issues in Hope Mills. For example, the dog issue in the park, where do you think it came from? The swimming issue, where do you think that came from? Few years ago, the Daniel Locklear case, it all came out of the chatter. If one of these media groups found an issue that was not transparent or detrimental to the, this governing body or this town. They would surely report it and we would read about it the next day. Heck, the, the no swimming issue made two different news cycles. And people are still asking about it, but not after that last article of explanation. Further, the Hope Mills Chatter Group, be it closed, has a number of elected officials. At the local, state, county, and national levels, all in this group. Myself, I'm a member of numerous military-related closed groups. That have a tremendous amount of elected and appointed officials on all three levels. If this social media practice was so detrimental, why didn't you bring it up before now? But here's what gets me. I feel like that my integrity has been challenged. I feel like my First Amendment rights have been challenged by this concern, by this issue. And I have done nothing, nothing wrong. I have violated no statute. I have conducted no town business. I've made no decision. I have not simultaneously communicated with any board member of this board on any decision that has come before this town. None. None. And it, I am extremely appalled and extremely disappointed that this issue's being raised tonight. And I take it personal, and that's why I did the research that I did, just finally set the record right. That we're doing nothing, at least I'm not doing anything wrong, and I can say that for the other, for the other participants. Mayor, that's all I have.
Yes, sir.
Uh, the information you got about Florida and Oklahoma, whatever state that was, came from the Hope Mills Chatter from Ron Harrison.
Nope. Came right from their website.
That's the source. You just now admitted that town business is being discussed in this chatter group.
I did not.
And action was taken. You just admitted it.
How?
You just, you just said it in your statement.
Why?
You said a lot of businesses originated right from chatter, is what you said.
I said that was reported by the newspaper from the chatter. That's exactly what I said, Mayor Pro Tim.
Okay, well, I didn't.
No, no, I wanna clear, that's exactly what I said.
I have the floor right now. And then you can have the floor back if you need it. I simply asked a question of my constituents about public appearance, nothing further, nothing less. I made no accusations about any individual member on this board. And Frida Bluestein said does not necessarily constitute a public meeting. But now we got a public, uh, records issue. I have asked the four of you to provide the public records that you use to make decisions in this boardroom and otherwise. Um, if thirty days is not adequate, whatever, is it your pleasure? Um, I would be remiss, you know, I'm a professional, I have a, a number, a professional to network with, and I'll leave it at that. So, um, I didn't take the issue lightly, since, since it's obvious there's a three to two. Uh, issue in here, uh, whatever emotion I would make about this would fail anyways. Um, but I have been taken back, and I'll, I'll go ahead and say some things. Um, we went to the back room to talk about a personnel matter. And it was obvious that everybody but Commissioner Edwards and I was pumped with information, cause we had papers in the hand. Regarding the hiring of a town clerk several months ago.
This is about a closed session.
It didn't go anywhere, no action was taken. It will not, it will not harm any situation. And I, I told you guys that was not our role. We cannot hire the town clerk. And you didn't believe me until the town attorney came in and advised you the same. It was obvious that you guys had information, that you wanted to move on, and Commissioner Edwards and I had no idea. Even tonight, even tonight, this motion to censure me, who authorized the drafting of that language? Was Commissioner Edwards involved in that? Or did the three of you decide to instruct the town attorney what he needed to do without authorization from Commissioner Edwards or myself? Uh, I wasn't aware that the town attorney was to take action based on three board members without pulling all board members.
I will say, I was not asked to draft any resolution. I was not involved in drafting.
You were not a part of that, sir?
I, I'm not, not involved in drafting that resolution.
Okay.
I was not either.
I was not part of that.
So we got all the whereas's from somebody else. All right. I'll, I'll just say that I'm here to represent the people of Hope Mills. I've been very fortunate to come in first in two commissioner races at this point. And next year, there'll be another election, and the people of Hope Mills will decide in their mind. Whether they wanna keep three or four commissioners involved in a closed group that regularly discusses town business. That they don't share with the rest of the citizens necessarily. And I'm proud of, I'm proud of any. And I'm proud of, I'm proud of any stance I've made, and you can go on with your censure tonight, that's fine. That's all I've got to say.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to make another comment. I can understand why you have, um, click, sir, closed sessions, and all we used to have in high school and when I was in college. And I know there's a lot of back and forth and comments made about people you don't even know. I can't understand why a closed session, why you want transparency and be open, why do you even need a closed session? I mean, why can't you come to the town board meetings and, and tell us what's wrong or what you're talking about in closed session? It just doesn't make sense to me, I don't belong to the chatter, and if I have anything to say, I'm gonna say it to y'all. And we need to get town people involved, but the ones on the chatter, if they'd come to the town board meetings and have an open discussion, I think that would solve a lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's move to the next item on our agenda, and that is consideration of the approval...
Madam Mayor, I'd like to say something on this.
Okay.
First and foremost, um, at no ti- in the letter that we received from Mr. Mitchell, it said, "At no time did I mention anyone's specific name, or the Facebook group name, or the administrator." And yet you're quoted in the article, "I personally believe that public appearance is very important when the three commissioners that participate in the Hope Mills chatter, a closed Facebook group with less than three hundred members, vote three to two to take action. Citizens might wonder how much decision was previously discussed in a closed group." So that wasn't really particularly true, what you wrote to us. But I find it interesting, as you question us, as I read some of the comments on your Mayor Pro Tem page, where you cast this light on, one comment, "Citizens might also wonder what influences the closed group has on our Cumberland County Joint Planning Board Representative, who is an active member of the group." Or when a woman questions about the sidewalks, your, your explanation of the sidewalks not being in front of the post offices, the other elected thought Rockfish Road and Johnson Street was more important. I mean, that's just not true. And in, and in all fairness, you didn't share at any time your response from Frida Bluestein. You just negated to add that to any of it, what people were saying, you just didn't add it in there, that you had received this response, and so how do you feel about this, this interpretation? You just led it to believe that we were doing something unethical. And I went through the chatter, and I went back from the time we were sworn in, and I have provided Dan, Annie Herzog, any posts that had three people comment at one time. And it was a thank you to John Zoka for helping on the lake. That was the only post that, that three elected made any comment on from the time of the swearing in. And previously, when Commissioner Edwards and Commissioner Marley were a part of that group, they too abided by these rules. They never discussed business and came, hashed out any kind of ruling, ever. That is not what has happened on that page, ever. People might not like some of the things that are spoken about when there are talking about what has happened after a meeting, but there has been no discussion, ever, on how someone was gonna vote, or what they were gonna do. And in fact, there hasn't been any post where three elected have discussed even remotely business, other than thanking Mr. Zoka for the help he has done for the town.
Madam Mayor, I'd be remiss if I didn't have something to say.
Yes, sir.
I don't deserve that, I think I deserve to be called any names or, or, uh, my reputation tarnished in any way, shape, or form. That was my own call, pulling out of the chatter, just in case there should be a conflict of interest. I didn't wanna be a part of anything that would be a conflict of interest. And as Ms. Larson said, I can only recall one time, and not simultaneously, for one time, a vote was thinking Representative Zoka. I believe the mayor might have did that as well, for his work in helping us with the lake. I just think this late in the game, being in February, the harm that has caused this board, that was trying to be a united board, work well together. Uh, I think Mr. Bellflowers is, uh, figures there shows that it's not a loaded board. I've seen it more loaded four years ago. I vote the way I think is best. I don't care what Meg says, or you say, or Pat, or the mayor, or Mr. Bellflowers. I vote my heart for these people I hear. That's who I work for. I don't work for this town staff, or for you, or the mayor, I work for these people I hear. And I think the pass-me-down stuff, it was, went through two or three different reporters to finally get to the one you really wanted to write the story. I key discredit to this whole board, every member of it. It's gonna take us a while to recover, it's not gonna be easy. I'm a fighter, I'm here to, to hit it head-on, and address it head-on. I refuse to be talked to or treated badly. So I have Mr. Mayor, Madam Mayor.
Okay, without any further discussion, I would like to move to the next item on our agenda, and that is consideration of approval of audit contract for fiscal year 2017-2018 with Thompson, Price, Scott, Adams, and Company, and they're currently budgeted an amount of eighteen thousand five hundred dollars. Is there any discussion on this, um, contract? Not, do I have a motion?
Motion to accept.
Have a motion to approve the audit contract, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, a second, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. The next item on our agenda is a discussion and approval of a resolution 2018-12, and this has been brought to us by Commissioner Bellflowers.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Resolution 2018-12, whereas the town of Hope Mills Town Council prides itself as working together as a governing body to make decisions in the best interest of this community, whereas it is important that members of the Town Council operate as a unit and through their words and actions, show respect for citizens and fellow board members. Whereas Mayor Pro Tem Mike, Michael D. Mitchell earlier questioned whether a quorum of elected officials that participate in a closed Facebook group was a violation of the North Carolina Open Meeting Law. Whereas Mayor Pro Tem Mitchell contacted the UNC School of Government for an official opinion on whether a quorum of elected officials in a closed Facebook group constitutes a violation of the North Carolina Open Meeting Law. Whereas Mayor Pro Tem Mitchell received written notice from Frida Bluestein of the UNC School of Government, who serves as an expert in social media law on February twenty-seventh, 2018, and our town attorney, that a quorum of elected officials participating in a closed Facebook group was not a violation of the North Carolina Open Meetings Law, unless they are simultaneously deliberating together on a pending issue or rendering a decision. Whereas on March ninth, 2018, Mayor Pro Tem Mitchell placed a non-scientific Facebook poll on his Mayor Pro Tem campaign Facebook page, asking citizens if they thought a quorum of elected officials on a closed Facebook group was a violation of, of the North Carolina Open Meeting Law, even though he was already informed by Frida Bluestein of the UNC School of Government and our town attorney that it was not. Whereas Mayor Pro Tem Mitchell then knowingly shared information gathered through this non-scientific poll to a, to a media news source without bringing the matter before the board for discussion. Whereas the information shared by Mayor Pro Tem Mitchell with a media news source resulted in an editorial questioning whether four of his fellow elected members were in violation of the North Carolina Open Meeting Law. Be it resolved that the town, Hope Mills Town Board votes to censure Mayor Pro Tem Mike D. Mitchell for his actions that result in public questioning through a media news source and through social media sources, the integrity of four of his fellow elected board, of board members in following the NC Open Meeting Law. Be it resolved that Mayor Pro Tem Mitchell took his actions after being informed in writing by Frida Bluestein on February twenty-seventh, 2018, and the town attorney, that there was no violation of the North Carolina Open Meeting Law. Furthermore, in the future, Mayor Pro Tem Mitchell should bring any issue that impacts the Town Board and his fellow elected to the board for open discussion and work in harmony with his fellow board members as the council conducts the business of the town. The foregoing resolution, having been submitted to a vote, received the following vote and was duly adopted this twenty-first day of May, 2018. And that's the way the resolution reads, Mayor?
We have this in the form of a motion to approve this resolution. You have to have a motion to approve the resolution, you have to have a second, then you have to have a vote. So do I?
By any circumstance, I second the motion.
I make the motion.
Okay, so we have the motion, we have the second, now discussion, and, um, okay, Mayor Pro Tem.
I'll just say that I didn't pass along the scientific poll to the media news source. Anybody goes to my Facebook page, it's a public page that anybody in Hope Mills can see, always has been, always will be. And you left out the word, you left out a critical word, that, uh, up here about Frida, uh, Bluestein, that needs to be entered into the minutes, that a quorum of elected officials participating in a closed Facebook group was not necessarily a violation of the North Carolina Opens Meeting Law. That need, necessarily needs to be entered in there, which opens up some sort of doubt. And I'll just say on my defense that I am just gathering public opinion on a matter, uh, the public views things a little differently. Sometimes, I guess we'll know next year, how they felt about all this. And I am an open book, all these emails went to my fellow elected from day one. And, and I'm the one that asked what'd be put on the agenda, I'm the one that asked Town Manager Adams to share all this information with you guys, I have nothing to hide. So, um, anyways, it's my opinion, this town will not, this town will stay divided, this board will stay divided as long as there is a closed Facebook group where information is talked about and discussed without privy to the other elected. I am not the division in this town, the division in this town started 2014 timeframe. And we'll continue with or without Mike Mitchell.
Mayor Warner?
Yes, ma'am.
I, I still feel that, that, and I've had calls too, and it's from people that are not on chatter, some that had been knocked off of chatter because they didn't agree with some of the things that were said. Even our Hope Mills Chamber of Commerce cannot get on. They were told that, um, I think Jan Spell was told by one of them that they had a waiting list and, and there's no way the chamber could get on it. I've talked to a minister that was knocked off of it because they didn't agree with what he said. And that's fine, they have their own opinion, but I, I still think ethics is part of this too. And I just think that if you really have the talent at heart, it needs to be open forum, and everybody needs to know what's going on. Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Mayor Pro Tem, do you not exercise your First Amendment rights on your Mayor Pro Tem campaign page?
Yeah, you just attacked me for it.
But, but...
With my poll, brother.
But you do, but you do exercise your First Amendment rights.
But it's public, sir. Public, 'cause I'm an elected official with more, a higher standard, a higher responsibility to the citizens of Hope Mills.
And, and that chatter, I'm not the custodian of the chatter, I don't own the chatter, I don't run the chatter. I'm not, I don't own Facebook. Even though I'm mem- I'm a member of many numerous closed Facebook groups that only pertain to the audience that it's established for, many of them. It would be like a closed group just for CPAs. If you're not a CPA, you don't get in. Why would you want in?
We don't discuss town business at the North Carolina Association of CPAs.
And, and I don't discuss town business simultaneously with any board member in the chatter, none.
But the chatter's total, the chatter's total, and it's included in the packet. Total, the chatter's total purpose is to discuss the town of Hope Mills business.
Oh, I, I disagree.
It says this right there in print, brother.
I disagree, but that's its whole purpose.
At, at this time, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of Resolution 2018-12, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, the resolution carries with a three to two vote. Okay, at this time, it's time for our managers' report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Board of Commissioners. Mr. Stephen Fleming is continuing to work on the three preliminary designs for your consideration. Hopefully, sometime in the next month or so, we'll get some feedback from him. And I'm, I'm trying to ascertain when he's going to have something to bring back to you all, but at this point, I don't know the answer to that. Rockfish Road sidewalk update, we have received approval of concurrence from DOT on May eleventh, and a pre-construction meeting is tentatively set for May nineteenth. Whether that, that happened, I'm not sure, I was not here, so. Um, and Mr. Cruz has gone on vacation. Damaged areas from Hurricane Matthew, I have one update to River Road. The contractor has installed the precast boxes and the pipe connecting the boxes, and will continue with the installation of the precast concrete end walls. After the installation of the end walls, the eight-inch ductile iron water line will be installed. Following that water line installation, the road will be reconstructed. The eel migratory season, we're continuing with basket inspections twice a week through June fifteenth, and the total count as of today's date is nineteen. A second progress report was sent on May seventeenth to the pertinent agencies. The art sculptures, the installation of the art sculptures have, has been completed, and staff is working on preparing information to be placed on the town's website with the details about the grant from the Arts Council of Fayetteville, Cumberland County that was received, and the partnership with the art students of UNCP to showcase the art sculptures for one year. And as far as ones that don't have paint, there, what's there was brought intentionally. So, I mean, what, if it doesn't have paint, it wasn't meant to have paint. So, it's not that they left off anything, I just wanted to clarify that. So, what they brought is what they created, so. On Thursday, May the seventeenth, Parks and Rec Director Kenny Bullock and Human Resources Director Letitia Daniels Black attended Leadership Brag. Uh, every, every year, for the past year, we've tried to have two staff attend that leadership, um, class. And it's a, a day well spent, um, they get to learn about all kinds of things, they jam-pack everything in there. On Friday, May the eighteenth, Fire Marshal and Division Chief Hamm, Fire Captain Evers, and firefighter Hurlbut traveled with fire truck twenty-one thirty-three to Camp Celebrate in Chapel Hill. to Camp Celebrate in Chapel Hill. The camp is a weekend camp for children ages seven to fifteen who have survived burn injuries. And each year, the fire department assists with the transport of children to the camp. The two thousand eighteen spring session of Citizens Academy will conclude this Thursday, May the twenty fourth, with the fire department. All the meals for the eight week session were sponsored one hundred percent. A brief graduation ceremony will be held at the June fourth regular meeting. And the cake for the graduation ceremony is being sponsored by Harris Teeter in the Trey Moore Village Shopping Center. Then additionally, um, in your packets, there was an update on the ASI final payment and status of MVP invoices. Did anyone have any questions concerning that? If not, I'm gonna move on to the update, um, or I'm sorry, update on the, I've skipped one, the lake water quality testing. Town staff has contacted the, um, NC DEQ water quality representatives as a follow-up to our initial request. Due to their involvement with the White Lake cleanup, representatives have not been readily available by phone or in office. Representatives have confirmed with the Cumberland County Environmental Health Department that they have not conducted any lake testing and do not plan to in the future. Staff is waiting a response from legal counsel. We've, we've asked Mister Hartzog to look into if there's a general statute or anything that pertains to who is responsible for the sampling. Staff has requested information numerous times in regards to protocol and testing parameters. State water quality indicated that we should contact Wake County, which was done last Wednesday, and we are awaiting a response. Also, staff requested the use of the state laboratory, which is free of charge, and we have not yet received a response from that. Town staff recommends starting sampling for fecal bacteria in the lake beginning this week. Samples will be processed by Microback Laboratory at the cost of thirty dollars a sample. Samples will be taken from four sites within the lake and sampled once a week for thirty days. We will continue with our efforts in requesting information on protocols and follow up with the state about use of the state laboratory. But based on everything that we've seen, that's our recommendation, and we intend to begin that this week. We don't know what else to do. We've kind of run into a brick wall. And then you all have received, um, from the finance director, the update on the proposed fiscal year two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen budget revision. And, um, I'm not sure, uh, if you all have any questions or discussion for that.
I met with Drew Friday morning, and I'm, I'm good with it myself.
Mister Bullock had to leave. Um, but I will let you all know that he did indicate to Mister Holland and myself that, um, he was fine with the proposed budget to begin with. And he's fine with this one. So, he can live with these cuts. He's the one that actually, we, we went to him and said, you need to find us the money for, you know, a portion of, um, what was added for his proposed assistant Parks and Rec Director. So, he can live with these.
Is there for the public's concern, is there any projected tax increase?
We have not, we are not, um, we have not recommended a tax increase. I presented to you at the previous meeting a balanced budget. You all wanted these items added in, and this is what we've come back with. These are our recommendations that we've come back with, with no tax increase. No, sir.
I have a question now. How severely damaged is this air conditioning heating system in this building?
Um, I don't know that it's severely damaged. It's extremely old. And we do have problems periodically with it where they have to come out and work on it.
Drew, you recall the cost of that replacement? I don't have it on tip my toe.
About eighty thousand dollars.
Yeah, we've added that. That's in this, I think it was sixty nine thousand, or eighty, it was eighty thousand?
Yeah, because in case they had to change parts, I saw all that.
But that's in the, that's in here. Everything that you all asked for us to add back in is in here, in the new proposed amounts.
I was doing some thinking though. If that's not in the budget, and we cut the rest of the year out with Up and Coming Weekly, that would give us eighty five, eighty six thousand dollars, right? And then if we had to replace it, we'll come money then?
How much? Fifty five? Yeah, fifty five hundred.
What did I say? Did I say another figure? Well, I meant five thousand dollar bracket.
Right.
Would it be advisable for us to stay within our numbers? Uh, do away with the balance of Up and Coming Weekly? Um, I mean, didn't do us any justice this past week. Put this air conditioner on hold so that we free up some money and Kenny won't lose some money. He's had to give up.
Mister Leg, we already made, we already made these decisions last, last meeting.
Well, I mean, we haven't voted on the budget, am I correct?
No, you have not. We've not held the, held, no, we've not held the public hearing, and there's not been a vote on it. No, sir.
We discussed it.
You've discussed it.
I'm just trying to think of a way that we could free up some money. And Kenny's sitting over there, Kenny's the department that's suffering by losing all his funds to this, and it's everything he needs. I mean, I know he gave up a tractor. It wasn't always near eighty thousand dollars prior to this. That was just a thought.
Well, originally in the original presentation, uh, that we presented, we were willing to put the air heating and air on hold, and with the idea that it could, something could happen, but, you know, at that time, we'd have to bring it to the board for a budget amendment. It may make it, it may make it another year, it may not. That's a, you know, that's.
Well, I'm, I'm fine with leaving it that way, uh, as long as there's no tax increase. And you told me there weren't.
No, sir. We are not proposing any tax increase.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I know the original proposed budget didn't have the, the HVAC unit in, and it was a recommendation at that time that we wait a year, uh, to replace it. Uh, but we put it in anyway. Um, and then we, of course, we also added the, uh, the position that's desperately needed in, in, in that department. But there was two other additions that came here that wasn't in the proposed, and one of them was the sixty seven hundred dollars that was added to the full responder amount.
That's, uh, per the agreement.
Yeah, that, that wasn't, that wasn't in the budget, in the proposed budget originally.
If I may, I can, I can respond to that. This week, while I was working on the additions that y'all had at the workshop, uh, the budget workshop, the actual number was presented to me. So either we can put it into budget now, or we can do a budget amendment in July to do it at that time. I figured since I had the number, and we need to put it in there anyways, I would go ahead and do it. When I sent you the email with the, um, revisions, I included that in there saying, we got the actual amount, so that was explained with that. And as always, anytime you get an email from me, you can always ask questions.
The other one was, um, was, was the added cost of the COLI increase. Those were two extras. But when I, when I looked down at for Kenny to get the position, all the reductions came from his department. From maintenance, dog parks, supplies, appearance, decorations, wall structure, even twenty three thousand five hundred and twenty five dollars for new, for a new playground for our parks. That's been on the priority list for quite some time. And then it goes in to reducing, uh, our senior citizen center of supplies and special events. So I'm in agreement with, with Commissioner Leg that these need to stay, and we can wait another year on the HVAC. Because the needs of, the needs of this department surely, surely outweigh all the cuts to this department. We can wait a year. And, and the other thing is, we only have one quote. There, we may get different quotes that may be cheaper than the one we have.
Right. We had to have, you know, one quote for the budget, so.
But if we were to take out the eighty, that would, we could keep all of that in, in the Parks and Rec budget.
If that's what the council would like to do.
And that's what I'm recommending. I, I mean, I can't see taking all this money out of, out of, out of all the Parks and Rec when they need all of this.
Well, we had it in there. We had it in there in the original budget.
I know you did. I know. But to balance it, you know, you, you went back and, and you had to make some cuts. I understand. Why? Because we didn't increase the revenue stream.
I had to come up with a hundred and seventy three thousand dollars after the budget workshop.
When we left, when we left here that night, that's what we left with. And this was the revision.
So do you want to? Do we need to make them, that in the form of a motion that we remove the HVAC system? Or can we just do it by consensus?
A consensus.
Okay.
So I know what direction to have ready.
I have something to say about that.
Okay.
Where, where's our server housed for the town of Hope Mills? Where's our server?
The HVAC?
Server equipment.
Our server.
Oh, for the.
Is it in this building?
It's in the, uh, IT room.
The server is. How many computers do we have? How many workstations?
Uh, what is, not, there's one workstation and two, two or three servers. And they have, there's a separate air conditioning unit in there that keeps it cool.
A separate? It's an interior type cooling system?
Yeah. That room gets a little hot.
I mean, that's my main concern is about technology, obviously about our employees working, and I still caution the board that in the, in the middle of summertime, it could take a week or two to get a, a downed system back up. And you're talking about our board meetings, you're talking about the computer system, you're talking about our employees, uh, enduring kind of crazy temperatures and expecting to do administrative work. It's not being, it's not being proactive, in my opinion. The Parks and Rec, uh, rec equipment, of course, is gonna be included in our comprehensive plan, which we hope to get grants for. So that's not necessarily a loss at this point. In fact, we'll probably have a, a huge gain in that department when, uh, McAdams is done.
Even the military has a rule, if it gets so hot, you go home.
What does that cost us to have downstairs for a week?
I mean, I can't answer.
We're gonna tell the military all week?
You getting PTO?
What was the question?
We send our staff home, do we still pay them, right?
I, I know that in the years that I've been here, the seven years that I've been here, we had, we had a couple of days where, and this has been, trying to think, it's been a number of years ago, but I don't think you were here, Drew. We went without air conditioning for a couple of days. Um, we opened the windows and we had fans and we continued to work. I don't think we were sent home, but now if it gets unbearable, you know, it's, I mean, it's a chance we may have to take if you don't keep it in there, so.
Well, I'm not for making the change. I'd still rather be proactive on that issue than reactive.
Then you may need to vote.
Yes, Mister Siskay.
Madam Mayor, Board. As far as the HVAC goes for this building, um, I look up there at you guys, and you're all sweating right now. The VAV boxes on this building are set at sixty five degrees, and it cannot keep up. Right now, the weak point, and Mister Leg, you'll understand this probably more than anybody else. According to the technicians, our weakest point right now that we have in the HVAC system are the coils. If the coils go down, it will cost us a minimum of forty thousand dollars to replace the coils, and it will take approximately a month to get the parts. So, there's the facts for y'all to make your decision.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just brought this up as a topic discussion instead of taxes. I didn't know it was gonna be another.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I can, I can make a suggestion. Nobody's gonna like it then. But, um, if, if all of us up here are so concerned about the air conditioning and our employees and, and keeping the cool air and everything, which I go on, we can hold up our, our salary increase until the next election. If we really care that much for.
I think the original, wasn't the original proposal for the AC not to be on it? Correct, right? That you thought you could limp along for a year, if not more. You weren't really sure. At this time, it was, right.
Not according to.
We mentioned, we took it out of the original budget, and if it were need to be replaced, we would have to do a budget amendment at that time and look for the revenues in order to cover it. We didn't say a year or more.
But I think that, I think our thinking on that was if something happened, it was gonna be a total replacement, not ordering new coil, coils.
Right, right.
We would just go ahead and replace and bring a budget amendment to you all.
Exactly.
Our restricted fund balance beyond the state requirements, your estimation is what, about thirty percent? Uh, versus the eight percent?
Yeah, we, we have plenty of fund, fund balance, even beyond the state stabilization amount. So.
Four times, four times the required?
Yeah, it's, it's not a question.
There you go.
I agree. I don't want our employees without air. I had to go without it last year at my house, but that's a home. This is here. So, I'm sorry I brought up the discussion. I just wanted to compare it to the tactics.
So we wanna just leave it as if we have the new proposed, and we have the public hearing. We can maybe get some input from the public too, cause we've had the, we've had the discussion about these items. We've added them back in, and then again, you've gone back to the staff. And they've okayed and made the recommendation that this is what they can live with. So, I think we're at that point now where we have the public hearing and, and move from that. Is that agreeable?
So, just to be clear, you're gonna leave the, the.
Leave the changes like they are.
The heating and air in.
Like it is, yes. If we don't, if we don't have to buy it, then we're, that's good news. If we do have to buy it, it's there and we're ready to move on it. Cause we don't want you, I don't see it very smart for you to have to come back to us and ask us that you need money for an HVAC system when we can include it, and then you just move on it if needed.
I thought we agreed to just take, to put that in motion July, in July.
We did.
We'll leave that up to building maintenance if they wanna go ahead and work towards that or not.
The maintenance was gonna direct us as far as what to do. Okay. We're all good. Everybody's got that, the changes were sent to us via email so that we could look at them, um, before the, um, hearing take.
Right. Then what I'll do is, I've already printed out the new actual budget document, and we'll scan that in tomorrow and put it on the website so this, the new revised budget will be what's on the website, so, uh, citizens can view it.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Next on our agenda is, um, reminders that are there.
Closed session?
And then, yeah, we have closed session. I just want to, as a reminder, while there's somebody here, and especially Roger's here with newspaper. Tomorrow is the building business rally, and we had these handouts, but it's very important that we participate in this. We, Hope Mills has a partnership with all these others. Because what we're looking at is when we have contracts, and Hope Mills has quite a lot of contracts, those that are here and those that are in the future. But we need to try to get local contractors to bid. We have found several of our projects that. We have found on several of our projects that we don't get bids from, from local people. We don't even get bids for those small jobs that, that contribute to the bigger job. So what we wanna do is be a part of this, and it's tomorrow at Fable Tech. Uh, they're encouraging all small businesses, contractors, even if you have a pressure washing company. Any company that could provide a service for something that's taking place, like there's painters, uh, brick masons. 'Cause what we're finding is, we're not tapping all the people that we have that possibly could have contributed to making sure the money stays local. So it's from three to seven, and it's at uh FTCC, they'll have business breakout sessions. Uh, it's free, they've gonna have uh contractors and a lot of information, so tomorrow, Fable Tech. And at this time, do we have a motion for closed session?
Madam Mayor, who added that item to the agenda?
That item, item was added by our um Ms. Adams and our attorney.
Yes, the personnel and attorney-client privilege if, if needed. Uh, that's up to Mister Hartzog if we need the attorney-client.
We need both items?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right. Make a motion to conduct a closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen point one one A three to consult with the attorney on matters within attorney-client privilege, and to conduct a closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen point one one A six to discuss personnel matters.
Have a motion in a second, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed, we'll go to the conference room at the front, and we ask that we, bear with us.